United States of America. And the Republic of America, which represents one nation, one nation, and it is one justice for all. Thank you. Councilman Dina, motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Sir. Second, on the chair, we see the public say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve consent agenda, exactly.
I'm motion to approve the consent agenda, all things appears to be in order.
Second. Motion to convene second by patient to approve this evening consent agenda, now we're public.
Counselor Piper?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Lovering?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye, consent agenda approved. This time of meeting, we're looking for visitors who have a like to your public comment on anything that is not on this evening's agenda. Anyone here interested in that? Seeing down, moving forward. Uh, next will be, uh, the appointment of Frank Vessel as probationary volunteer firefighter. Chief?
Yeah, so he was officially a couple months ago, um, been attending training, other than many trainings in those two months, just as an observer. He's self-employed, lives out of, uh, out of airport, and will be a local responder, which is kind of needed right now, so at this time, I would recommend you guys put him on probation now.
Aye. I have a motion from council.
Uh, motion to approve appointment of Frank Vessel as probationary volunteer firefighter, second.
Second by Shepherd, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved, sir, if you agree forward, this evening, with the ministry rule.
Uh, if you'll raise your right hand, please, if you want to face the crowd, I think they want to get pictures of you. I'm going to repeat after me, I state your names.
Aye, Frank Vessel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
As probationary firefighter.
As probationary firefighter.
With fidelity, so help me God.
With fidelity, so help me God.
Forward, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome to the fire department. Hey, sir. Thank you, sir.
If you wish, air. Whatever's meant.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, things out of business is, uh, notice of public hearings, uh, there was a public hearing held September 12th, uh, concerning, uh, rocking, Rocky Top, Coven, Sabbath, Rocky Top, Sabbath subdivision, uh, by the planning board. And that will come before this council on, uh, October 16th, 2023. All right, next item in business is, uh, under ordinances and resolutions, uh, Resolution 19 Ken. Resolution to the city, uh, approving the final plat of Urban Wood RV Subdivision Park located 201 Highway 2 East.
All right, mayor and council, this is, uh, um, final plat for the Urban Wood RV Park, which, as you all know, some, um, RV parks are subject to subdivision plating. So, um, Urban Wood RV Park came, came before us in April of 2022 to turn, um, that piece of, piece of property into, uh, the Urban Wood RV Park. It has the, um, retro cameras on it. So they have met all of their essentials, and all of those pages in the plat are included here. The, um, final plat application, the cover letter, um, describing each of the conditions, engineer certification, letter for public works, approving the utility extensions, uh, letter approving, um, the fire hydrant email, um, regarding the inspection of conditions, the DEQ approval, and title report, consenting to plat, all of the plat drawings and record drawings and tax information as required. So they were in compliance with, with each of the conditions. We granted, the city had granted a variance to allow 1.5 parking spaces, um, but, uh, it was met, and you might remember that the six groups of parking spaces, um, were made bigger, right? In case we had bigger vehicles with bike hitch racks or something. And so the parking spaces, there's fewer of them because you're not pulling your own camper, you're, the camper's there and you're coming to stay. Um, all utilities were installed in conformance for the requirements of the city, as well as DEQ. Prior, say, we have the DEQ approval letters. The, um, the fire hydrant that was going to be internal was needed by the public works director and the fire chief based on the location of the existing fire hydrants. So they, all areas that were disturbed were reseeded and, um, noxious weeds were sprayed. They, they had submitted their final landscaping plan, and they put in all the trees and bushes, and, um, they met the three-year from the preliminary plat, obviously. So, um, staff recommends adoption of Resolution 1910, which approves the findings of fact as set out in CFP 2302, and doc's final plat, uh, 201 Highway 2 East.
All right, council, may I have a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve, uh, Resolution 1910.
Second.
Second, that number, I'll go all these.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Lovering?
Aye.
Counselor Piper?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye, Resolution 1910 is approved. Um, before we move on, I have a question to the fire chief. Were you looking at that hydrant over on Third? It's got that fence built right around it as part of your requirements for fire suppression?
Uh, there's one, there's one on the highway that's very close to, I believe, um, honestly, I don't remember, because it's been a little while ago. But I know those two are different, like, they're far 50 feet, so it's probably.
I was just curious, that one out on Third, out in front of the wood, folks there?
Okay.
It got the cedar fence put around it, they made a little square around the hydrant there. I don't know any height about, far, maybe people in here and hook up a, uh, a large high on air hose.
Does it have, does it meet up to 60 inches, do you know?
No, I mean, it, it does not.
Would you look at it, please, because I think it would be very useful if you had it.
So in front of, um, the wood, the cabinet place right by.
Yeah, actually, it's in the empty lot.
Empty lot.
All right, next, uh, right, next, uh, AWM or whatever it is, is an empty lot. I've always been concerned about that because there's no way you can get a hydrant on it if you have that large wood manufacturer in place. And now you have the storage building or whatever it calls that for the back of this new subdivision. Thanks.
So page E, let me know about page E, hang on. We're going to have to do a vote for, for it, and, no, this is not good.
Okay, I had a speech already.
We're postponing now. Page, page 77 in your packets has the, uh, page 77 has the plat, and you can see this little blue dot, kind of this little with the yellow down here in this corner, it said new hydrant, but it wasn't functional after they finished reviewing it. There is a, a fire hydrant just to the east of this property.
So we're by the entrance, over by the entrance to Columbia Falls RV Park is the next area, thanks, sir.
Yes, so.
But then, mind the one I'm talking about, it's on third. Okay, uh, when we move on, and we'll go to, uh, reports, business, we're here in council. John, you have anything to say?
I don't, John, thank you.
Good to go, thank you. Good to go.
Mr. Mayor, Susan, I was concerned, you know, we've been waiting 40 years for our sidewalk, and it looks like we're going to be waiting another 40 years for our sidewalk over there. What are we doing about acquiring the little corner that is not owned by the city where the hydrant is? Now that the building's for sale.
E, so it's LBOT's right-of-way, and they have instituted that right-of-way phase, which added that, uh, $16,000 to our cost, and then they will make, so based on the size, Department of Transportation will purchase that property from the owner, yeah, based on, based on their calculation, so they added a couple more thousand to, to our share, um, so.
And the timeframe, of course, once it goes through that group, it's probably another two to three years?
No, that, so the right-of-way phase added that, we, we missed, uh, that bump of it had to be submitted, all engineering had to be submitted by September in order to have 2024 construction. Fingers crossed, we're looking at 2025. So.
But for your report.
But they, but they will address that within the right-of-way phase.
My bad.
Any other question I have, why didn't they let anybody know that nobody was our representative to the board? You know, what's wrong with MDOT, I'm sure they could have found somebody that G and 4 take it approved. Because we, obviously, this stuff can't be approved, because we didn't have a board member after the former mayor, Councilwoman resigned. I don't understand their process, is what I'm asking. You would thought after she resigned a year ago, the day would put a notice with the three cities, we have no representation to MDOT. Because those are the gentleman who bring these things up to make the decisions, and what he said, correct? Basically, so why didn't they let somebody know? Did bureaucracy work as usual?
I don't know.
That's a good question, isn't it?
It's like we better heads up against it all.
I guess, no wonder we got anything done with MDOT.
Anything else, Michael?
That's all.
Jim?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I just had one simple question as brought up from my white, and that was this. Who cleans our, uh, restrooms in the parks now? Is that part of our, uh, monthly, uh, payment to the, uh, company that does the internals here, that cleans horses?
No, our contracted janitorial company only cleans River's Edge Park. And with the addition of the second floor, more hours into parks, our, our parks or water crew clean the bathrooms.
You just one, but they.
Except for River's Edge, so they clean.
Well, there's just one.
Columbus and Parks cleans Columbus and, and Maritex.
Oh, and, and Maritex?
Yes.
So, you did, River's Edge is the only one that's done by the, uh, company that cleans here?
Right, it's year-round, and the other two get buttoned up for the winter.
Oh, I see. Okay, just, just some question, that's all I have. City manager, a quick one?
All right, um, so I'm glad I put it, put things in writing. So we did have a, um, it was a good meeting, um, with BNSF and MBD and the city on 12th Avenue West. The city will, as originally planned in our project, will purchase the concrete panels. We estimated them at 72,000, they'll come back to us with the, with the real cost, um, we did, so our local BNSF, uh, folks were not opposed to granting an easement to complete the sidewalk outside of having that crossing completed, because the, our sidewalk doesn't touch that pavement, right? It's, so, so they're going to look into that, because otherwise, we were, obviously, we have work stoppage because of bad weather, right? We're not pouring concrete now, but come spring, so we have a few months to get, uh, sidewalk easement in, into place, so we can get that done, but the really good news was if we pay for the concrete panels and we're doing the sidewalk, that BNSF and MDOT will do their special state funding in 80, 20, and we're not paying for arms and gates and so on.
Susan, I have a question, when will they install the, uh, concrete crossings?
Um, that's also part of the discussion.
Because, isn't that, we can't run our sidewalks until, and those are going to extend beyond the arms, right? The existing, or, where the arms are built?
A little bit, so.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so can we put sidewalk in before they plan the new?
Based, based on the construction diagram, yes, they can put it, there's, I want to say it's, there's so many feet distance, I want to say it's four feet, but that might not be right, because it, you guys can see where the sidewalk ends now, right? It's poured, so it goes around that pole and under the guy, we had to avoid, we could not move, the flat electric pole that was kind of right in the way of where you put the sidewalk, because that's how right-of-way works, right? So we're going to the west, so there's more distance right there, and then.
And our, and the concrete, uh, panels extend out, outwards, so they, no, my point, if we could get, as soon as they have the concrete panels in, them installing arms wouldn't hold us up from completing our sidewalk.
That's what we're hopeful, yes, and, and they were nodding in agreement, we shook hands and everybody, so, um, it sounded more promising than before, so they're drafting documents that then our legal league will have to look at.
At the time you met with BNSF, was there any mention of the crossing for being closed?
No one.
They were even taking down some of the sign, they just smashed up in front of it, it's super deep, get figured out. Drive over there sometime.
Yeah, it's, it's a good jump on a vehicle.
Yo, get somebody stuck up on the truck.
So, we gotta prove anything, you know?
Well, it sounded like they were going to improve it.
Oh, really?
Well, because, so when we first started 12th Avenue West, the, um, not the train master, or whoever, one of the masters that would know that there were concrete panels there, told us that, that they had nine of those concrete panels for our project, that those are being used, and it sounded like they're being used on four. Like, they're no longer available, but it's not an item that has a 40 to 50 foot leg or anything like that. So they told me they were replacing those concrete panels at four.
And then they're going to use those over on 12th?
No, we have to get new ones now.
Oh, because I was going to say, don't let it as flaws.
No, no, we have to get new ones, so, um, anyway, a better meeting than expected.
Good.
So, um, so Parks Department is collaborating with Ryan from People and Carnivores. Council, you had dedicated the $5,000 in your budget to, to partnering with People and Carnivores and their activity. The, um, they're completing their bear conflict assessment, uh, within the city that was, you know, free of, free of charge. They work with Fish Water Life of Parks, monitoring activity, um, they're able, so we're going to put more bear-proof garbage cans in each of our parks, and so we're leveraging our funds, because the ones we got last year, you might remember, were $9,000, and we're kind of a shock. But, um, people in Carnivores are providing some funding, and, um, and will provide some, some funding, but they're working in parks, it sounds like four to five weeks, four weeks before they hit the ground, so we can get them installed. But they're also, um, the concrete pads, um, council, you might, might remember that after we bought those very expensive garbage cans, it was noted that they could be hauled away with a couple of heavy men in a truck. So we bulked them down to concrete pads, so they cannot be just readily hauled away. So the, the partnership with People and Carnivores includes that they ordered the concrete pads that, and holds, like, we're going to be ready to just plant these, and then, it sounds like we'll have bear-proof garbage containers in all of our parks. So, um, so that was good news. Um, I'm going to show you a copy of the new tax statement and kind of review some of the tax, um, things, obviously, I go through these other notes. Working, working with Jackie and the Columbia Falls Foundation, she finally was able to get a, a quote from an electrician. It was $2,300, but he was running conduit for 100 feet, and I was, like, there's not that much room between the building and the monument, so I was trying to figure out where they were coming from, if they're running conduit for 100 feet. And then I contacted the foundation, because the 2,300 was to install a provided light, and then it, it was in the, that's just the labor to run the wiring, uh, and I don't remember what the quotes were, it was, they were from Diddy's on the lights, so, um, I've been playing full tank with the president of the foundation in order to get that. And then, after the monument was put in, there was something, there was a change in the wiring, you might remember, over on the legislature bank side. It doesn't make a lot of sense to run wiring and put a light on one side and not put it on the other. So I'm trying to get the information on what does it, what we have to do, because that outlet that had been right there behind the monument got, got moved, removed, um, so I'll be bringing that back, and you guys can decide if that is something you want to inform with, with your urban, with your community. All right, so, um, Chief Peter got to go to Sydney for skateball, and, and so we're postponing that capital review. He did send a picture of Sydney's police station, um, it was this big, beautiful, new facility that, of course, is in partnership with the county, and I reminded them they have oilmen. Like, don't be getting any ideas, um, they're going to give you carpeting, and down the, but they're giving flooring in the police department this year, that's.
Are we moving forward on the wall at all?
Well, I, we need for our contractor to give it back, we put a placeholder in the budget.
Yeah, because that, that had to go in before we did carpet, wasn't it?
Yes, so, um, I don't know, I might just have to stop out, go, go visit. Um, so this morning, we did review the wastewater treatment plant, and they're only at 60% engineering. I spoke with their higher-ups at HPR, they, we are literally nine months behind schedule. Um, we will, as I work with DNRC, because of our funding, have to look at construction times. They are apologetic that, that it's taken them this long, we'll, we'll be updating the schedule and the timeline. Sounds like we won't call, call for bids, I want to say, hopeful to call for bids in December, December, and then awarding in January, and then, you know, we did shorten the amount of construction time. We have a lot of deadlines with that grant funding, so we have to make sure we're still, that we have not convinced it so that, I don't know, contractors are going to be more expensive, because now they have a shorter time to go.
If we can't get this, or it's really close to coming underneath that timeline, the only way we can get HPR to write a huge explanation about why it took that extra amount of time to get this done, which is putting us in a tough position?
Um, it won't help, but, so we do that hard, DNRC, it won't, it won't change those deadlines, but I, that our, our program manager at DNRC will work with us, we can, the city, not the engineer, the city can request an extension beyond that December date. There is a federal drop debt date, right, that, if it's not done by then, too bad, so sad. But some of the money, so that 1.4 million that we put in direct, that has that December 2024 deadline. But if we're awarding the project, as we discussed this morning, if we award it, they start in the spring, like, the bioreactor expansion was estimated at 945,000, there's a couple of big ticket items that can get done readily in the summer, Bill. They're expensive. The, the blower is the only item, as we reviewed that, that has a, a big lead time. It's estimated about 195,000, and that, right now, blowers are 40 to 50 weeks out. But that would still, I think they'd, but it's not the major ticket item, right? So, like that, if that was, they can do everything except place the, they can do the necessary construction around the, okay, now put the blower on there. So that was, they thought that all the rest of those mixers, those, those are, those are in normal 20, 26 week, uh, weekly days. So, um, you will, at our next meeting, I'll, hopefully, I'll have all the information, so I can show you kind of those deadlines and how we're going to amend the budget, because we were spending our, our money on engineering upfront, I think we were going to start pulling that out as we were constructing. Uh, working with our program manager, we're going to move some of that around and pull the trigger sooner on construction and, and engineering. Just move where we're going to take the money, so that we're not risking the deadline of 1.4 million and the other money. So, um, they're supposed to be getting that to me by early next week. They were doing some, they did the whole, like, guts review on each of those, each of the items with, uh, Grady and Chris. Throughout today, see what kind of changes need to be done, uh, but we have that 90% plan coming, submit, it'll be submitted to DEQ. We can call for bids, uh, subject to DEQ's approval. Uh, DEQ says to allow 90 days, but they've been kicking them out about three, so. Anyway, I just wanted to, we're, you know, that that, I had, I had called the higher-ups at HPR and said, this is unacceptable, we gotta get this back, we gotta, um, you know, when we awarded that contract, they assured us they had the time and the manpower, and, so the nine months delay to, to get to, and we're going to call for bids is a little alarming, so. Um, we met with Teamsters Local Unit Number Two last Wednesday for the wage opener, and we have tentative agreement. I just need to receive their notice of ratification, it will be on your next council agenda to, to approve that. We had, uh, it was just a wage opener for this year, because it's a three-year contract through 2025, so we did wage openers. You might remember last year with, with the economy and the numbers and the, it was, we negotiated wages for the 23 fiscal year, and then did wage openers for the other two, so that, um, because we were faced with about a 7 to 8% inflation rate at that time, which, we're like, okay, things are going to calm down, which, which they have. The, the offer to them was the same as the non-union, the, uh, the 5%, what we have tentative agreement on, and we made a slight adjustment on the leave position, um, the great 13th leave position, in order to be competitive, um, in the market right now. We are, we are, um, advertising for our water leave position, we're extending that, our first look was the 20th, and we did not receive, we received a couple of applications, but they, we did not receive a single completed application from anyone with any qualifications, so we're going to be kicking it out again, um, and we also made, uh, by memorandum of agreement. So historically, in our collective bargaining, bargaining agreements and in our personnel policy, the city gives credit, and it's, and is defined for education or experience directly tied to that position after your first year with the city. The, the, what we were bumping up against is that our sister cities and throughout the state, they do that upon hire, so instead of entry level, maybe you get to start at step four, because you have 10 years of experience. So, uh, I don't remember which sister city was advertising, so they were advertising a gap of like 27 to 30, right? Depending on your experience, we were starting with the, with the 24 week schedule at 27, right? And so, and then saying, oh, but after your first year, we can give you these steps. So, the, the, um, Teamsters, we have, they, they did sign the memorandum of agreement. We want to always keep in, in line with the council's goal to attract good candidates, retain them, and motivate them, so, um, that's what we're, we're looking for, so, just waiting on. So just waiting on, waiting on signatures. So real quickly then, let me show you the new tax bill. So Flathead County changed their tax system from our original internal in-house programming. And so this, this is going to be, like, up on top will be the name and the legal and everything, but then here's your tax bill. And so what I want to, I want to show you though, it, so you can see the city here, look at our city in the resort tax relief for this particular tax law. I don't even know whose it is because when Larry Johnson came up to me from the county, there was no successor number attached to it, but, so here's somebody's tax bill that shows the two mills, emergency disaster, med levy, resort tax relief, city, and then total city, right? And then, of course, then their specials. What's new this year is that under special, they break out, so if you're in, so if you're in the, in an urban renewal district or a TED, you're not going to see under special, you can see that up there, right up there, where I just pushed, you're going to see either industrial park, TED, or urban renewal. Now, I, I, I'm adding more information to our budget summary because we know that that, that we didn't levy more mills, that that's the incremental value from the base year, which on the industrial park, TED, was 2015. So the, the way the calculation works, and it's always worked this way, it just doesn't, it has not previously appeared on that tax bill. Black Mountain Software doesn't put it on the face of the tax bill, but they have the hybrid technology which 14 counties, including Flathead, use. The backbone of their system puts it here. So we are, worked collaboratively with the county, they're also adding on the coupon, there's going to be a description of that, that will only appear if you're in a TIP or a TED or a urban renewal, that this doesn't represent additional taxes, it's the incremental value, and, you know, basically see the website for more information. And then the city and the county, we are going to collaborate, the treasurer's office and myself and Barb, we're going to collaborate on language and we're going to put it, put it on the website, because otherwise, there's going to be a lot of phone calls, right? This didn't appear on your tax statement before and now you see this big number on your tax statement. So, like I said, I pulled back the budget message and said, got to add P, got to add some information here, we'll put it on our website, county will put it on their website and, and we'll move forward. So, but this, a new, new software, it doesn't, so in the calculation, for example, it doesn't, like, the six mills are excluded by statute and the new, any voted levies voted after the creation, so like the school district bond and the 911 are, are, aren't included in that, like, they're excluded, they get, they get everything including the incremental value. So we went through, with the county, went through several tax bills, but you had to, maybe I described it to about the finance director or the city clerk, I think, you had to be behind the wizard's curtain, right? In order to look at the numbers to determine that they were correct. So the county has done their usual, they kick out the, the base information and say, tell us if this looks correct. Well, me, I really struggled with trying to figure out if it was correct because I've always been able to take the, of the minerals, calculate it and have it work out, but that, they, they, they put it in a whole, a whole lot more districts. There's like four different schedules, so you had to be able to, like I said, be behind the curtain, but it is calculated correctly, that would be verified. So, new tax statement, it'll just mean a, probably a little, we'll field a few more phone calls, hoping that the information on the tax statement within the budget, budget message, and, and we're, I'm working with my staff to do a little budget brief. I saw another city, Colorado, they were out of Colorado or something, had like this little budget handout, budget brief, and I'm like, yeah, our, our council would like that. Anyway, so this is the tax statement and then because, right, we were, we were talking about this in brief detail, like, how, what's going to be the overall impact? So I, currently I only have access to the tax roll, which doesn't bring it out by every little levy, but in total. So I gathered a, a sample of, of our tax statements, they're not identified by, didn't belong here, because you guys have seen mine in the past, mine's, mine's fur, but we, we already know from our certified valuation that our taxable value increased by an overall 46.67%. Residential had increased 51%, commercial 59, which we know that some of those others, right, the last little increase or didn't increase as much, hence the 46.67. Countywide pursuant to the Department of Revenue, residential in Flathead County, there was a 45% increase and commercial was 60, so we can see our residential a little higher. So my, my taxable value here, the 3074, my assessed value, taxable value, last year's tax mills on my tax bill were 73294, this year they're 52165. So what this demonstrates is that mills went down, so from all tax and jurisdictions, went down 29%, right? But that's what we say, even the county had dropped mills, we dropped mills, so values go up, we're tied to dollars. So my total taxes are going up 3%, $102.30. City taxes, so we, we decreased our mills 50% and in that total taxes, right, and in that mix, we, we dropped on mine, my city taxes dropped by 49%, 211.81. So we can just, I, I did just samples, right? And one thing I noticed was we're kind of in the ballpark in terms of that overall residential and commercial. So tax, tax number two, so this, this taxpayer, their assessed value only went up 39%, which meant that they were below that average, so, so check this out. Less than 1%, $13.34 increase with a 31% decrease on the city taxes. So, and that's what we, that's what we had talked about, right? Like, how do you find the sweet spot? If your valuation goes up higher than the average, then your taxes are going to go up a little bit more and you can see my mistake here, I copied seven twice. So this taxpayer on example seven, their assessed value jumped 56% which was higher than average, but again, mills dropped 29%, their taxes went up 11.67% or $509.81. City taxes had decreased 22%, right? So that 509 was that direct result, that net of the cities dropped $211. So we would have automatically dropped 20 mills based on the, based on the calendar and then we dropped another 70 mills. Now, next year, probably going to go up a little bit, right? Because we have to hunt everything and we don't have as much resort tax to offset that. Senate Bill 332 will require us to, if we increase taxes, then our budget resolution must include the impact on 100,000, 200,000 and 300,000 dollar property if you increase taxes. Now, Flathead County interpreted that, they said, you have to change your resolution if you increase or decrease, but does the statute, well, they haven't cut, it's codified that it's not on their print cycle yet. Specifically said that you increase taxes. Now, also because, because of Senate Bill 332, I added that, that into our budget message that we decrease taxes and therefore, you know, here, here's the decrease impact, but by, by code, we don't have to, by, when we reduce it, we don't have to include that because Senator Hertz, who had sponsored that bill, wanted that front and center, that conversation. Mayor and council, you had that conversation every single one of the budget meetings. I told you you were going to get tired of talking about it, but we talked about it every time for the benefit of our taxpayers because we do, we are very transparent, we put that information out there from the beginning. So this, our one, our one commercial example that I threw in here, this property increased a little higher than the average and their taxes are going up 14%. Just like 19% we actually didn't see the taxes, but I wanted to give you a sampling of these, here's where we're at. And so anyone, and you can see it, like, tax example, I'm received, hey, they went up 42%, taxes went down 29, and they had just a $68.47 increase in taxes, 2%. But that's, that was our message, right? Don't panic over the 43 or the 45 or the 62, that won't be your tax anchors. And if the, the governor has asked, asked for the county's tax challenge to immediately go to court and, and we, that they're, how come they want to expedient decision on the 95 mills? So taxes might, when, when the actual tax statements go out, they might even be less than this. Because that's, in theory, that's how it works, right? If it goes up, it must go down. So, so that's what I, that's what I had for this evening. Did anybody have questions? I, your budget message includes some of this, right? That here's an example, this is, this is the impact. So as much information as possible, so when you have your budget book in your hand and it's scanned in and added to the website and sent off to the state website, the, the goal is that we're answering all those questions, so.
All right. Thanks, we would have our city attorney report, you have anything for us this evening, Dustin?
Nothing this evening.
Chief, chief? No, chief, chief sergeant? Sorry, we thought we'd just skip the sergeant thing and we just will write the chief. Good, good, all right. Counsel?
I'm going to try sharing.
Close to 80 seconds, the journal table.
Hi.